I'd like to call to order the meeting, the Mint Hill Planning Board meeting of March 18th, 2024. It's now 6:30. We do have a quorum. I'll ask Roger to do the invocation, please.
Let us pray.
Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you for the blessings you give us each day and we pray that you help us to make the best of the opportunities you put in our path each day. We pray, Lord, for discernment as this board looks at the issues here in our town and our home, Lord, and we just pray that you help us to make good decisions and solid decisions that represent the residents and the businesses of our community. We just also ask for your protections and blessing upon our first responders and upon military all over the world for our country, Lord. Again, we just thank you for the blessings you give us. In thy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Roger. Can I get an approval of the minutes of the February 20th meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion. A second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion, any changes? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right. I'm going to add something on here, additions. I'm going to, Chip Todd, who has been a member of our planning board for a number of years, turning into his resignation for personal reasons. I want to thank Chip for what he did here. He was a great asset to this, to this meeting. Hate to see him go, but understand. So, thank you, Chip. Any other additions or deletions of agenda items? Nothing. Reports? Any reports? Committees? Anybody got anything? Any old business? New business? All right. First item, only item, actually. Discussion and recommendation on ZC 23-9 filed by Service Corporation International, Cameron Alexander, to allow the development of a funeral home for property located at 7844 McWherter Road, tax parcel number 197031-12, proposed rezoning to BG CZD. All right. How do you want to deal with this? John? Just, you want the applicant to?
Yeah, it's okay.
Oh, sure.
Take the presentation.
Yeah. Probably knows more about it than you do, so.
Gentlemen, I appreciate your time. My name is Jody Dupree and I'm with McEwen Funeral Service. Before I go through the presentation, I just wanted to give you just a brief history of how we got to this point. McEwen Funeral Service, as you know, is right down the street here in Mint Hill. As a matter of fact, McEwen is probably one of the oldest, if not the oldest, continuously operating businesses in Mint Hill. And there's a number of McEwen locations now around Charlotte, Pineville, Monroe, but they started in Mint Hill. Mr. McEwen and his family lived upstairs in the current location. Funeral home operated downstairs. And that funeral home building was built in 1935, and it was a state-of-the-art facility in 1935. But in the last 90 years, just like Mint Hill has changed considerably, and especially in the last few years, the business has changed for us to the point that that facility no longer adequately meets the needs that we have. It's an old building that in many ways is crumbling around us and plaster walls and those sorts of things. So about maybe a year and a half, nearly two years ago now, we started looking at various properties around Mint Hill where we thought we'd like to relocate and build a new, modern facility. And the one we've settled on is the one that we're presenting to you tonight. One that we think meets the needs that we need. We started out with a public meeting at our, a community meeting at our funeral home, I think June of last year. Got the public's input on it. We heard a lot of things that they didn't like, some things that were fine, some things that were not fine. We adjusted our site plan, adjusted our plans in many ways since that time. We've had a number of times for the public to put in some input. Now, we've made adjustments pretty continuously for the last nine, 10 months to get to the point that we are today. On this rezoning plan that you've got here, you see our, our location is located on Fairview Road. When we initially started this process, we wanted a cut onto Fairview Road, and we're told by the Department of Transportation that we could not get one. So at that point, that is when the cut onto McWherter began, and we were going to have an entrance and an exit there onto McWherter. Of course, that's something that was not ideal and not the thing that we wanted to happen to begin with, but our only option at the time. Fortunately, the Department of Transportation has changed their outlook on it over the last nine months, and we now have a cut onto Fairview. It'll be what's called a hammerhead cut, where you've got a left end, right out, those sorts of things, where the directional arrows will be. I'll show you that in a moment. But as a result of that, we no longer need and they no longer allowing us a cut onto McWherter, which is perfectly fine. So this plant, plan, one of the other things that changed over the time is that we moved the building, a little more building forward, which seems to be more what happens in Mint Hill. The buildings tend to be more forward, parking behind. Our initial plan did not have that, so we have moved it forward. We've got the required setback there. The building is forward. We've got the parking spaces behind. The front half of the property is zoned correctly. The back half is not. And so we chose to go through this process in order to make sure we've got adequate parking. We've got way more parking spaces probably than we need, but that's fine. We wanted to make sure there was plenty of room, that we would never have an issue. At the time we arranged the parking, we thought that there was going to be an opening on McWherter. And the last thing we wanted was for anyone to ever pull out and park on McWherter to get to the funeral home. So that would have been not good. So we wanted to make sure there was adequate parking, and we've certainly got that. This is the plan as you see it today in front of you. There will be landscaping down the side of McWherter, trees and landscaping, as well as a sidewalk that extends from Fairview all the way down to the back of the property. And one entrance and exit there onto Fairview. Here's the most recent revisions that we made after the, after the last meetings that we've had. We have removed, at one point, when we had a cut onto McWherter, we were going to put in a turn lane off McWherter to make it a little easier for anyone leaving McWherter to get on to Fairview and make a right-hand turn. Since that connector to McWherter has been removed, that right turn lane on Fairview Road has also been removed. We have added the addition there at the entrance to turn arrows that show full movement access to Fairview. Those arrows are on the, will be painted on the pavement there. Streetlight there over that as well as proposed, which will show people adequate illumination of the entrance and exit of the funeral home off of Fairview. There was originally in our site plan a connector that was not ever a real connector. It was there with the potential of a connection between us and the dentist office that you guys had approved that's being built next door. We have since removed that connection as well. And the dumpster that was going to be along there has been moved to the rear of the property, relocated the dumpster to there. We beefed up the landscaping in berm there and the trees between us and the, and the neighbor to the side there, the dentist office, to help with the views there. And at the back, behind the retention pond, a six-foot-high privacy fence was something some of the neighbors that live adjacent to that had requested, and something we certainly were happy to do, would be a six-foot-high privacy fence there along the southern property line. This is the proposed rendering. This is about the second or third incarnation of what this was going to look like. The night we had our initial community meeting, I don't know if any of you are aware of that community meeting, but one of the things we heard from a number of people that night, including our own staff, was the original building we had designed was not that pretty. So we went back to the drawing board, and we're very pleased with the way this building looks today. Here's another, a look at it from the front. As you can see, it is a mixture of white brick and hardy plank. And this is a view from the aerial view southwest, looking at it. Obviously, as you go looking up towards the top of the picture, it's coming back into town. But that is a look at entrance and exit as well. This is another aerial view, looking southeast. The dentist office is now to the left through those trees over there that you see to the left of the main entrance. Another picture, you can see the directional signs, the directional arrows there on the pavement. What's not showing in this is there's also going to be whatever the required number is, but the number of streetlights along that sidewalk in the front that are this identical matching ones as the other ones that have been recently put here in town. So those, we'll be matching those as well, so that it really ties in to the sort of the theme of what the downtown area looks like, since we're right around the corner from the downtown. We know that 218 is very much getting to be an entrance, has been for a while, but continues to become an entrance to Mint Hill just because of 485, obviously. There's Fairview Road, as you can see. And again, the site plan as we have it today. What questions do you have that I can answer or have someone answer?
Start with you, Scott.
I wasn't able to attend the last commissioner's meeting, and I know one of the questions that came up was about property values and the impact this would have negatively on the property values. Could you speak to that a little bit?
Well, I'm not a real estate agent, but I do know that there has been some talk of that. But we have a number of funeral homes built in a number of places. There appears to be, have been no detriment in most of the places. I think most of the time, the things that will be detrimental to property values are when there's a cemetery adjacent to it that can have an impact, as well as if the location has a crematory. And I understand that as well. This particular location does not have a crematory, will not have a crematory. In fact, we're building a brand-new crematory at one of our locations in Charlotte right now. There will be no crematory at this location, and there will be no active decedent preparation at this location. We are required by North Carolina law for funeral homes to have a prep room that has certain things that meet the state standard. But then, once it meets those standards, we then have it classified with the state as an inactive prep room, and that will be the case here. So there will be no decedent preparation on site, no crematories on site. That are the things very often that tend to have some impact on property values. But the fact is, anything other than an open lot, any type of commercial property on this corner, will have some type of impact, whether that's a laundromat, or a convenience store, or a Jiffy Lube. Something will have an impact. And we think that a funeral home, historically speaking, where we do business, we really don't feel that it's going to be anything even to the nature that a daycare center would be sometimes, believe it or not, from an impact to property values.
John, I'm going to kind of direct.
It's fine.
The front part of this parcel is by right.
Yes.
So if the funeral home is not approved to go here, what can go here?
So there's several uses that are allowed by right, BG District, some types of restaurants, retail buildings, hospitals, just some examples. And that a funeral home?
It is by right on the front, yeah.
It's by right, I know someone spoke in the question, I'm clarifying this. It's by right, but it has a subsection, a special requirement that lets you get references to those. But it is a funeral home, it's allowed by right. So those are the kinds of uses. And there's other uses that would require, you know, the individual zoning players.
And also, speaking of the, the things about the crematory and the decedent care, those were also conditions that were put into our rezoning request that we've agreed to as well. And when it comes to property values, we, you know, there's locations in downtown. We had the Harry and Bryant location for a number of years in downtown. Hankins and Whittington is in downtown, and I can assure you, none of the homes in that area seem to be depreciating in value. Can promise you.
And the only other question I had was on the, on your detention. Is that a wet pond or a dry pond?
I'll defer to Matt Mandel.
Good evening. Matt Mandel with ESP Associates. I think right now, the plan is for that to be a dry pond, but we're still working through, would be working through full engineering as this process is completed. We have gone through the stormwater concept plan with the county and met those requirements at this time. But my understanding at this time, it would be a dry pond.
That's all I got, Tom.
All right, thanks.
Eric?
Yeah, yeah, just a couple of questions. Should this project be approved? What's your timeline looking like?
Again, I'll defer to Matt. I think, from what I understand, our timeline is we, you know, by the time we put it out to bid and all these things that we have to do after that fact, we would look to have a building sometime by the, probably the beginning of the fourth quarter next year.
Okay. And you mentioned your current facility is just outdated. What's the current square footage on that facility?
Oh, that building is probably, I'm going to say, well over 20,000 square feet. But the entire top half of that building, which we used to use for the public, can no longer be used for the public because of the, the elevator is an old cargo-type elevator. We just, we don't, we are not allowed to take the public upstairs for anything. So everything we use is downstairs. And it's just, if we try to hang a picture on the wall, we can't do it. It's plaster walls and it's crumbling around us. And the rooms are, the rooms just aren't conducive to the way, to the way funeral services are conducted today and visitations and things are conducted today. There's a lot of combination things that happen at a funeral home now, where years ago, you would come to the funeral home the night before and have a two-hour visitation and the next day a funeral service. Today, very often, those events are combined at the same time. So you end up sometimes with, the way that things maneuver in the funeral home doesn't work when you've got a building, an old house that's cut up into little rooms. It was great when you were worried about heating a house and you needed a bunch of small rooms in 1935. Doesn't work too well in 2024.
Gotcha. I'm from rural North Carolina, and the funeral home we have there, I mean, it, it stays open pretty much 24/7 when there's a body in the home. Is that, I mean, what's y'all's normal operating hours?
Normally, it's, it's standard operating hours. There's no one there at night if there's a decedent present. There's been situations over the years where you've got a particular family or something that because of their religious beliefs, they want to stay there all night long. That is so rare. I can't even remember the last time it happened. But if it did, we'd stay there with them. But I, it just doesn't happen anymore. When we, unless we have a visitation, we're typically closed by 6:00 at night.
And then my last question is more for John and just kind of a follow-up from Scott. That by right parcel, is that the one that's kind of deviated from the rear parcel on that back line, that back lot line from the dentist office now?
Correct.
Okay.
The front part is BG, and then it's, and then there's the horror zone.
Gotcha. Okay, that's all I got.
Roger?
Yeah, okay. Current funeral home, elevator. Just, I'm just, I'm just curious. I've been here a long time, and, you know, that's one of the most iconic buildings in the
It is.
in the town. They don't sell elevators for me anymore?
They do. But if they sold an elevator, and they do, but if we put an elevator in, then we're still putting people upstairs on a floor that at times you walk around on it and you can, not one I want to put the general public on.
I get that, but I'm starting to creak and crack a little myself, but I'm still putting money in.
Right.
Okay, and upgrading. But with, with that said, I'm disappointed that a company of y'all's size would choose to take an iconic building in the middle of the community that you're a part of, and number one, not take care of it, number two, let it get into this situation. But that's, that's another thing said. 218, let's talk 218. I have a real issue with 218. I'm a, 49 years with the fire department. Okay, 218 is at its best bad, okay? Because of the amount of traffic, you said it yourself, it's kind of the gateway now off of 485. It's so close there with the park, you know, another stoplight there, you know. So we've got the stoplight at ARPS, we've got the stoplight at, at the park now, another one at 485. So things are backing up now. Sometimes traffic gets pretty busy now, and I'm really concerned about traffic. I was not surprised when DOT refused to cut on 218. What did surprise me, and I've been on this board quite a few years, that they changed their mind and decided to. How'd y'all accomplish that? Okay, I've seen people try and didn't, and didn't, and were not successful of convincing DOT of things. So, so number one, I'm concerned about the fire department and, and the way, I don't know what people are like other places, but people in Mint Hill, there's a bunch of people in Mint Hill that are very popular. And that parking lot ain't going to hold. Who's going to come see them? I've seen it happen, time and time again, when, when some of the iconic people of this community pass away, there's unbelievable turnout of people coming to, coming to visit, visitation for the family or coming to the service. And, and that really concerns me with the amount of calls that the fire department runs every day. It averages, you know, with, it's, it's all over the place, but, but there's a lot of, a lot of calls every day. And right now, you know, they're even building the second department because there's so many calls that have to come in and out of that, of that one station. So I'm always kind of looking at it from the emergency services side.
Sure.
That does concern me. And overflow, I don't know how you stop overflow on McWherter. Okay? Because when, myself, I have parked across the street and run across the street to go to visitation.
Right.
Okay? Or to the service, whatever, because that was the parking available. And, you know, I know, I know at one time, y'all would talk about having a, an agreement with Chick-fil-A about maybe some overflow or using their parking places or something like that. I remember that was part of the discussion during Chick-fil-A's, when they, when they were designing. But my question is, do you really think you can control how many people's going to come?
Well, we don't have control over how many people come. I will tell you that the parking at the new facility is in excess of what our parking is now. We don't have that much parking as it is today. And the fact is, we have to, as you know, being on the planning board, we have to build these, build a funeral home and build, any building, any business is going to build for, and the parking for, first of all, what's required by law for your square footage. And secondly, you build for what the typical normal situation is. There could always be some exception where something just outlandish happens and you get a ton of people. But it's the exception, it's not the norm. And so you have to build for the norm, not the exception. I would certainly hope that people would not park on McWherter Road. And I would think that if that did happen, and if we would set up something there to say that it was a tow zone, if somebody parked at McWherter and they got their car towed, I doubt people would do it very often. They'd find out pretty quickly that's not the place to park. We would hope that would not happen. As it is now, and back to your comment about the building, we've spent a lot of money on that building over the years. In fact, it was only about, I want to say, maybe 11, 12 years ago, we spent probably three-quarters of a million dollars on that building to shore up some problems that the building was having because of the age. But even that, after, after a while, we looked at, could we, could we modify that building? The fact is, we don't have enough space there. We have to lease the parking that we have there now to the side of the building. We don't even own that. There's just not room there to do what we want to do and get the building in the shape we want it to be. I appreciate it is an iconic building, and I think it's beautiful. But unfortunately, at 90 years old, it's very difficult to maintain the business in its current environment in that building.
Yep. That part's disappointing. But my next thing is, why the 218? Why 218? Why do you want to be on 218?
Well, we wanted to be in, in fairly close proximity to where we are now. We didn't want to go really far out. We didn't want to go somewhere too far away from town. And it just is a beautiful piece of property, perfectly flat, and it's, it's right around the corner, literally right around the corner from us now. It's just super convenient.
John, the fire department? Everybody signed off? Everybody's good? Okay, okay. It's, it's, that's surprising to me, but, but like I said, that, that is my concern. I have one more question, too, on the fence, a six-foot fence. Is there any way that could be a higher fence? Like an eight-foot fence, or?
In the back?
Yeah, mhm.
I see no reason it couldn't be. And I will tell you this, I wanted to make this comment. When it comes to the really high-profile funerals with a ton of people, what typically happens in today's environment with funerals is if it's, if it's a family that wants to have their funeral at the funeral home, this is not to say that every family that comes to funeral home are not church folks. That's not the case at all. But typically, when somebody is going to have a ton of people at their funeral, it's a high profile, they're almost always church funerals because they're people that are very involved in their church, and it's large churches. Those end up being off-site to begin with. So it would, you know, it's not a big issue.
Well, if that's the case, why you need that many parking spaces then?
For the chance that we may. Because when we first started designing these parking spaces, we didn't need that many. We did that to make sure there was no overflow on McWherter when we had to cut onto McWherter.
Okay. Well, with the area in the back that you're looking to rezone, I think the absolute most you can do back there to protect that development, I think is important, okay? I don't think six-foot is, personal opinion, I don't think six-foot's adequate. I think it needs to be as much and as, and as attractive as possible back there because I do think this, this, this will have a, you know, you know, an impact on 218. I think it's going to have an impact on McWherter. And quite honestly, I'm not in favor of the move, okay? I understand the building might be old, the building might be having a lot of problems. But you say you're building new ones around, and like I said, maybe this is more, but I, I look at this position as, I like to look at what, in my opinion, is good for Mint Hill, and I've been here since 64. And so, you know, I've seen a lot, seen a lot of things change, seen a lot of things improve. And, you know, there's very few places like this that I've been able to go and visit. And so, you know, and protecting the integrity of, of, of the base structure is extremely important to me, the best we possibly can, and still following, you know, being fair to everybody, you included.
Sure.
Including the, the business community and the, and the citizens who choose to live here. And, you know, we appreciate the fact that you, that you are choosing to keep a location in Mint Hill because I think it's good business for you. But I just have to say, in this particular situation, I understand the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted, but I'm not in favor, okay? Because of, I think this changes, I think this changes the basic structure in the downtown Mint Hill area, and I think this moves a lot of congestion that's unnecessary at this point out on 218. Because 218 concerns me anyway, and I would don't want to see anything else happen out there. I don't get to choose, but just because of the level of, the way Mint Hill's growing, and Mint Hill's going to continue to grow. And North Carolina doesn't have hardly anything that any of us are going to see for 218.
Right.
And, and I think that's a, a real issue for the people that live along and have to travel that road every day. But thank you. I digress.
Matt, you have, come here.
I just had one, one question for you, Mr. Hendricks. We currently call out a six-foot fence on the plan as part of the conditions. Is there a height that you would recommend?
Well, I think our maximum is eight, isn't it?
And that was going to be my next question for John, if there's a maximum that they're permitted to go to.
Well, I mean, there is for residential, but I mean, really, if there's any conditional on it, then whatever area it is.
Yeah.
So if it's eight, 10, 20, I mean, it's whatever ultimately approved on the order.
If eight makes you feel better, we have no problem with eight.
Well, I understand. I'll digress right now.
Okay.
Just a couple of things. This area back in the back that seems undeveloped, you've got a few trees in on what's up there. What, what is the intent of that? Is that just going to be?
It's, it's just land.
Land area?
We have no, no intent to develop it with anything.
Okay. And I guess this is a question more for Matt. I was wondering, I don't see the topo, if the pond could be maybe, well, first of all, I'd like to, I'd like to think that area that you've got for the pond is more than enough to meet the code requirements. So I know there's some concern over stormwater. Maybe we could go with the 25-year storm versus the 10. I don't think it'll be any problem from a size from, you've got plenty of area.
I would have to check on that with our civil team. We did initially have the pond water quality area located off to the right where that opens bases. And as they went through the PCO concept plan with the county, and they're part of their preliminary design, this is where they found it worked better, so.
Okay, where it is now?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. That's just a thought. I know there's some residents complaining about stormwater running across their property. You're going to do the predevelop, you're going to match that with post-develop. But I was thinking, maybe we could
I can, I can check on that.
Look at the 25-year. I don't think it's going to add any more to the construction cost or anything if we could do the 25-year. And then as far as the buffering in the back, like Roger said, I know there's some existing trees back there, you know, I, I see it all the time, that we got to preserve existing trees, and that's going to be your buffer. And way too often, I'm like, if you'll just let us plant some giant Emerald Green Arbor Vitae's or whatever, a more dense, it's going to provide a better screening than the existing trees. And maybe we could supplement those existing trees with a beefed-up landscape screening in the back to kind of like cordon this thing off to where it can't be seen from any sides. And not to mention, they'll, the trees will get way over six feet tall
Yeah, and I think, I think with that area there where you, where you do have the existing vegetation, that's the area that we're providing the fence as well. So
Yes.
there would be adequate screening, screening with the fence.
Yeah, and, and like I said, from a noise condition, the opaque fence definitely blocks the vision, but I think from noise and activity, more trees would achieve the same thing and hamper some of the noise, so that the residents wouldn't feel like there's a parking lot right next to them.
Right. Let's understand. We can certainly do that.
Yeah. And then I, you know, I would definitely propose, I know that, even though I, I get it with aquatic wildlife, mosquitoes aren't really that bad, but if we could do a sand filter versus a wet pond, and I don't know what Luisa said.
As I mentioned earlier, I believe it will be a dry pond. I don't know that it's, it, the site's not large enough for it to be a wet pond.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's true. See, that, that, I mean, and then the trees, I know, this is the Mint Hill Road on the McWherter, John? Because I know DOT won't let you put trees or lights in the right of way anymore. So I was thinking if we could just maybe beef up McWherter Road screening. Just like I said, I, you know, I get it. The only thing you're talking about really not being by right is the parking area in the pond. So as a result, I would think a parking area in a pond would be better than a bunch of houses if I was the neighbor. So I'm just thinking, is there some way we could screen this thing off and really isolate it from the surrounding properties?
We could certainly beef up landscaping, for sure. Absolutely. Happy to do that.
And then this is, you said this is gravity? There's not, there's no drain field? You got gravity? There's not, there's no drain field, you got gravity public sewer too? Okay.
Correct.
I think that's all I've got.
Okay, so if, if there is a proposal, Kenny, you're asking for trees and a fence? Or more, more screening and a fence? Is that what you're suggesting?
All are fence.
Yeah, I mean, I know Roger wants to fence, like I said, I'm just, we, we could put a, a chain link for barrier, but I, in my humble opinion, I just feel like a bunch of Emerald Green Arborvitae's or Giant Green Arborvitae's provide better screening from both noise and sound than a eight-foot or 10-foot tall fence.
Okay, I do have a couple of questions. So what is the protocol? You're having a funeral procession and all of a sudden the fire trucks come flying out of there? What happens?
Well, there's only, uh, I think about 29 times in 2023 that we even had a procession that.
So on the 28th time?
The 28th time. Every procession that we have that goes from our funeral home to a cemetery is always led by the, by law enforcement.
Right.
And so obviously, if something came in from a fire standpoint, the law enforcement leaves, we drive the speed they want us to drive, we leave and go the direction they want us to go, when they want us to go. And so if something were happening, they'd certainly stop or spread it out at that point and, and.
Another question.
Uh, an emergency situation, emergency vehicle, because I can tell you this, we go through processions all the time somewhere where an emergency vehicle comes along that's not at the fire department, but it comes along. When that happens, the police always move us so that they have the, the right of way to come through. They're going to take precedence over any funeral procession. But it's all, no procession that we have is not led by law enforcement.
Right, I mean, that's the way it should be as long as a law enforcement.
That's as long as they're willing to do it.
Right.
Certainly.
All right.
I wish they, I wish in every community they were willing, but the, in Mint Hill, they certainly are.
Right. They, um, there, there's no comments in this meeting? All y'all, you do that in the board meetings? So by right, it could be a whole lot worse. I mean, I, I kind of like the old building over here, but I would be concerned about what goes there if you guys don't go there. At least you got a nice looking building.
I understand.
There could be a lot worse things going there. Um, the pond, it's not a pond, you're saying, so you're pretty sure it's going to be a filter, sand tuck?
It's a dry, it's basically a dry depression whenever.
Because anytime we do a pond or anything, we always try to, we worry about kids getting around, it's a neighborhood, there are kids around there. We don't want kids to get into a pond and get in trouble, even maybe with that, because you're going to have water in it from time to time, right?
Typically, 24 to 48 hours after a, a large storm event.
I still would think from a safety standpoint, you, you, you would want to have a concern there. I mean, I don't know how much water the thing could hold.
Um, I, I don't know the design depth. I mean, it's, it's not very deep, but, um, if there's concerns there, it could potentially look at.
Almost every time we've done it with one of the other places around here, we've asked them to do something from a safety standpoint with a fence. Some type of fence to keep it out. If I was a kid, guess what I'd be? I'd be in there catching turtles and frogs. And so I know what kids are like, they're going to get in there and we don't need that kind of an accident.
Understood.
All right, um, you say you're parking at your old facility, how much is your parking at your old facility? Do you know?
I've got it written somewhere. Steve, do you remember the parking spaces we've got? The spaces that we've got on our actual property are fairly limited. Most of our parking is in the overflow to the side, and at the back of our property, there's a drain field for septic system there now, so we can't do anything and park on that. So most of our parking is not nearly as, as big around our actual property as you think.
Do you have a feel for it at all? I mean, you've got 100, what, 100 or 106 at the other?
I want to say it's in the, in the 60 space range, 65 or so.
So you're almost twice as much?
50, you're saying about 50, when, even with the overflow.
Yeah.
Just not a lot.
We talked about the privacy fence, I'm still not sure what we're really asking for there in a motion. Oh, I forget one. All right, um, I don't have any, anybody else got anything?
Well, I have a follow-up.
Okay.
To your question, as far as if there's a procession leaving, it goes back to what am I, uh, concerned earlier? If there, if, if there's a procession leaving, say, car number eight back is who's pulling out and the fire department is responding, um, you know, there's just, just not a lot of place for the fire, the police officer's not going to know about it.
Right.
Okay, um, um, because y'all usually use county sheriffs, not Mint Hill police, or last time I was there, he was a county sheriff. There's just not a lot of places to go, uh, to get out of the way, especially with the regular traffic that's there now. You, you can't, you can't stop traffic and let a funeral procession out and not have a backup.
Right.
Okay, in either direction, there's going to be a backup, and then you have no place for the fire department to go if it backs up in front of the fire department. And I just, uh, I wouldn't want it to be, you know, uh, wouldn't want it to be my house that they were going to, but I, I just, I just, uh, I just think this is, this is a lot of pressure on this road and, uh, um, the number, you know, and, and I understand there might, could be worse businesses take this spot, but it, they weren't, they weren't, they won't be covering as large of an area because the, the by right is the front partial, right? Not the back partial. Back partial's residential that follows along with, with our, um, land use plan, smaller plan. And one other question I got, the downtown, that new downtown overlay that was going to incorporate a second street, possibly for business?
Yes.
From the park area all the way down to 51? How does this fit in all of that?
It doesn't fit in at all. So.
It's going to be splat, it's going to be right in the middle of it, isn't it?
Yeah, well, I mean, just to go back to what he said at the beginning, um, initially we had a start, if we were heading that direction, so it would have been a sole connection to McWhorter, no connection to 218. As things went, they met with the neighbors and that was quickly, that was a deal call. And that, nobody wants that.
Okay.
So there was a lot of conversation afterwards, hit CBT, initially came out and said no connection to 218, and then they came back and said the 218. And then as you see, um, later they just said no connection to McWhorter. So we did look at that initially, um, but that means no connection to 218. So, uh, but you're talking about this 218 sub-area plan, which primarily deals with the area over by the park, um, but you're correct, there was an idea to have a parallel street that runs, uh, from the park to McWhorter.
To take the pressure off 218.
And the idea was is to eliminate curb cuts on 218 and to put everything on the road that would be between, you know, it would be a cyclone between, uh, it would probably be behind Dr. Baker's office.
Yeah.
Uh, in between the, the pond and that.
Which was originally designed to give commercial access.
That's actually initial plan.
Yeah.
But, um, you know, even at that time when that plan was being drafted, Dr. Baker had already started heading forward with this plan. And so he knew that, I mean, he hadn't had a connection. So the, honestly, the plan started to teeter a little bit really out of the gate as far as this idea of having a.
Okay, all right, and, and the, and the site that you currently have?
Mm-hmm.
Can't tear down or rebuild what you want?
No, we have no way to operate if we tear a building down. We're operating every single day.
Didn't you say you had multiple locations around town?
Not around Mint Hill. We have locations in Charlotte, nobody, we would never ask somebody in Mint Hill to go to Charlotte for a funeral.
Oh, wow.
So no, we can't. And then even if we build it back, it's still not, we, we can't go up because we don't want a two-story funeral home. And then we'd have to go out, we don't have room to go out and still have the parking and the space. We're already leasing parking as it is, unfortunately.
Didn't you say you had 20,000 feet? And you're only building back eight, right?
Yeah, because we're only using the downstairs now. If it's laid out correctly, then we're fine. It's a little less than nine. If we, if we lay it out correctly, it's fine. There's a lot of unusual, unused or unusable space. I almost said unusual, that too, but a lot of unusable space in a funeral home.
I'm just curious, what are you going to do with the property?
Um, at this time, there's no plans for it. We don't know what will, will happen to it. We probably will not retain it. We don't have anybody lined up to buy it or anything like that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
One, I mean, real final question. Uh, you said in 2023, you had approximately 29 funeral services at the location here?
That resulted in a procession.
Got you. Um, has that trended upwards over the years?
No, it's trended downward.
Okay.
Drastically. The days of, of every service resulting in a procession has, has declined year after year after year, it just doesn't happen. First and foremost, we're at about a 60% cremation rate, so there's nowhere to process to very often. It's a cremation service, a visitation happening the same time as the service, not one the night before, and then another event the next day is at the same time. So about 60% of the time, we're not taking a deceit anywhere to be in, interred. So that has cut down, and as that continues to go up every single year, the number of processions continues to decline.
Okay. What's the average?
All right.
Anybody else?
How many people usually attend?
Anywhere, it depends on the service, but I will tell you typically, if you can get six, 60 to 75 people at a funeral service at one time, it's pretty.
How many cars is that?
30, 25, I mean, every car has a couple of people.
Then why are you asking for 100?
Once again, you, you ask about what happens if you have the aberration, that's why we're asking.
You told me I was wrong, so why do you need 100?
Well, we asked for that originally because we didn't want people parking on McWhorter. We haven't done away with the parking spaces, we just did away with McWhorter.
What you going to dump back out on 218? Them 100 cars?
If we get 100, yes, sir.
Traffic's going to get backed up everywhere. Okay, all right, thank you. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right, any more discussion?
I could just, one more.
Yeah.
And Matt, when you said Hammerhead, it, I'm anticipating you're going to put a concrete median in 218.
Doesn't show that.
No, I don't believe so.
Doesn't show that.
No, the, the, not at this time. I understand is the access onto our, onto 218 from our site would be full access left or right.
So DOT allowed full access? Okay. If, if DOT allowed full access, would it be possible to widen that drive to have a left out and a right out?
Currently, as it's shown, they have not stated that that would be required. Um, I, I don't know as we go through.
Yeah, just from the funeral home perspective, I would think that, because 218 does get busy and people could be waiting for quite a while to get out. So I just wondered, if it was feasible to make that three lanes, two lanes out, one left turn, one right turn and.
I'll answer to that.
And inbound.
I mean, I, yeah, I'd, I'd say that we venture to say we have room to do that if it's something that's needed. Um, I don't know that it would be required. I know in some situations, um, that's preferred, but in some situations, it's actually not because they don't want two cars parked side by side obstructing the view of one trying to turn. So I, I don't know that I can answer that question, but we, we would potentially have room to incorporate that if needed. Uh, but we'll have to go through the full driveway permitting process with DOT as we move into the civil plan, so.
Who dictates that? Who would dictate that that's okay to do it that way? DOT? Even though it's y'all's driveway, it's, it's.
Correct.
Other's coming out on the.
Yeah, we're accessing their road, so they would dictate it.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right, anybody else? Okay, I'm willing to entertain a motion of some kind. Anybody?
Well, Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would like to make a motion in regards to case ZZ 23-9 to recommend an unfavorable recommendation forward to the board.
All right, we have an unfavorable recommendation. Any seconds?
Second.
Who's second? Eric?
Yeah.
Yeah, Eric's second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Two opposed? Well, we need four to pass, huh? Or just a majority? You, me? I would say aye. I, I would, I would say that I would be in favor of, not the motion, I would be in favor of the funeral home. I'm opposed to the motion.
Well, at this point, you don't have a, then the motion falls.
Right.[1576.24]